The administrative conference of the Shreveport City Council is now called Order. Chair will do the prayer and Councilman Everson will do the pleasurable legislative prayer. Heavenly Father, we come again thanking you for this day and for this opportunity to meet, to transact the temporary business of this city. As we come, Lord, we ask you to be a part of our discussions, a part of our deliberations. We ask the blessings upon the mayor and all these city council members as we attempt to do your will as a relation to this city. Thank you, Father, and may citizens of this city be benefited from this meeting today. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and with your hand over your heart, repeat the pledge in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam. Claudia.
President.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mrs. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Leach. Ms. Goldman.
Okay, thank you, Madam Claudia. Let's, tomorrow we'll be entertaining the motion to adopt the minutes of the March 7th, administrative conference of Weller's, the eighth regular council meeting. At this time, we are down for any recognitions, awards, but distinguished guests and communications. Are there any council members that would like to have any of those items to present?
I have just a communication. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend tomorrow. I am chaperoning a fifth grade field trip down to Houston. Apparently, that is on my schedule for tomorrow, so I'm going to be missing meetings.
Well, I think that's a very important task in the event to accommodate some kids down there. So, thank you for letting us know when we have any important legislation we just postponed until you get back.
You can always call me on the phone, but they won't take my, right? Hopefully, we'll have a quorum, right?
Well, let's see, I guess we will.
They're missing a few right now.
Let me, let me express my sincere appreciation to Mayor Tyler and to council members of Weller's staff for your condolences and prayers and thoughts during the illness and the passing of my brother. We funeralize him on Saturday and appreciate the mayor being there and some other staff from the council. And it was very comforting to have the mayor and it's also comforting to get the emails and the text messages and the Facebook condolences, all that helps us in our struggles and grief. So, thank you for that. Okay, any other council members? If not, Madam Mayor, you have any awards, recognitions?
I just have one announcement and the others will be forthcoming on tomorrow. But I did send something to council members a little earlier today inviting you to attend a press conference tomorrow at 1:30 in my mayor's conference room upstairs. And of course, the purpose of the conference is to provide a public update on the first year progress of this administration. And so, we'd be honored if council members could please join us for that press conference tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust those that are available will be there. Looking forward to this excellent first year report, Mayor.
Thank you, we hope so.
And it's been a good year, I can say that. I think it's been a very good year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. And we will have other announcements tomorrow, but we wanted to just try to remind everybody today about that particular one since I won't see you again until, before we do that press conference.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say thank you to the council members, I'll say it again. I think it's been a good year. 2015 has been a good year and it's because all of us have really pulled together to try to focus on providing those services despite the many challenges we had. We had a lot of disasters, I think, more disasters than I've seen in a while. Every few months, it appears that we had one and, but our team, and I want to say thank you to our team of people, they were, they kept services going while not getting any sleep trying to address the disaster. So, it's been, you know, it's been, it's been a good year. It's been challenging, but it's been a good year.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, reports? Any standard report? Anybody have any thing to report or ask Mr. Green? We'll look forward to talking to you later and doing the appeals. Revenue collection and the security department will be coming up at the next meeting. Mr. Swinney will have a master plan. We'll look forward to that. Okay, it's not a public hearing on the agenda today, I mean, for tomorrow rather. So, we will move on with analyzing the agenda. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Adding legislation to the agenda, the regular meeting only in public comments and motions and added to the items of the agenda. Resolution 59 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Great Raft Brewing for the Heart of Gold Five-Pole Afterparty. This is sponsored by Councilman Everson. Ordinance 34A is going to replace ordinance 34 on the current agenda. It amends the section 90-197 of the Shreveport City ordinance to increase the term and penalty for speeding in a 25 mile an hour or below speed zone.
Okay. Any councilmen have any discussion regarding these items to be added? Councilman?
I have not compared the two, but what's the change between the new version and the version that's on the?
The only change was we had placed in language in the information sheet that it was school zone specific, and it's not. It's just residential zone, so we took that language out and corrected it.
And there was some duplicative language that was removed as well.
Okay.
But nothing of substance to the actual ordinance itself.
And I know I was involved in the initial proposal of this, but so did this end up in terms of doubling? Did this roughly double those?
The commission, or the committee, Public Safety Committee, determined in our last meeting that the doubling was a little excessive. They went to a 50% increase on any of the fines that are set forth in paragraph D.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I'd say briefly on the other one, just yet another District B seems to have a lot of events, especially in springtime when the weather is nice, there's a lot of things outdoors. So, I start to get confused, there are so many of these requests. So, we do look forward to an opportunity to work with the, you know, police department to maybe see if we can come up with a way to accommodate some of these requests without having to have council action every time. So, we will look forward to that, but for the time being, we're just steady trying to respond to them, so.
Yeah, and I think, good point, Councilman. I think that, you know, these events are usually events that are wholesome, you know, yet sometimes it's not brought to us timely. But I think they are goodwill events and that we can work with these groups whenever they happen, as long as they meet, you know, the standard in the safety that we accommodate with the police. So, but we want to welcome them, we want to be friendly to our businesses in this way. Okay, any other comments? I have no public comment forums at this time. So, Ms. Crawford, we move on to the other items.
Consent agenda legislation, there is none to introduce routine ordinances and resolutions. To adopt ordinances and resolutions, resolution 51 declaring the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties are surplus. Resolution 52 does the same, a resolution declaring the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties is surplus. Resolution 53 suspends provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at 4801 Line Avenue, Suite 14 at the Holy Angels Gift for Food Happy Hour. Resolution 54 authorizes Wayne Leroy Fussell Jr. and Melissa Burns Fussell located at 9914 Green Oaks Drive to connect to the water and sewer systems for the city of Shreveport. Resolution 55 authorizes Stephen R. Thornton and Cynthia L. Thornton located at 9846 Wallace Lake Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport. Resolution 57 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Highland Dish Crawl. And then, Resolution 58 suspends provisions of Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the discharge of flaming arrows into a body of water during the Cub Scouts Arrow of Light Ceremony on April the 5th, 2016.
Okay.
We'll be there for that one.
Highland Dish Crawl.
Let's see that.
The Highland Dish Crawl is a fundraiser for the Highland Jazz and Blues Fest and what they do, you know, sometimes you hear of a pub crawl where people go from bar to bar. Instead, what they do here is bring all of the restaurants that are in the Highland area together to one location and people go from station to station to sample the different restaurants. So, it's a fun event, it's only its second year, they started it last year and they're doing it again.
Great, that sounds interesting.
So, is all of that happening in one block?
It is, it's just, it's actually all right there in Louisiana, on Louisiana Street by Monjuene's and all of that, so it's all right there.
It's like two or three different parties every week.
Fantastic. Yes, Councilman?
Couple of things. On the resolution 54, I do remember Split Oak, okay, my question on the map is, is the blue lines, the lines that are owned by the city, and then the red is the privately owned lines?
I'm letting Robert come up to answer that question.
We had a long discussion the last four years about continuing the whole loop and who was going to pay, and I don't remember how it got resolved. And are they connecting to the red line in front of their house? Is that what?
The blue line is the water mains that are represented, the red line's the center line of the street.
Okay, so, now looking at the map, here's my question, where are they connecting to the water line?
I would need to verify that, but it looks like they're running connection probably over to Norris Ferry Road, but let me verify that with Scott Mason before I make that statement.
One of the things we talked about at this, the time that all this came up in Split Oak and all that was, we would not allow people to run across somebody else's lot to connect.
That's correct.
And so, I had the same question about this one. I'd like to get verification on that. And then, on the next one, the one on Wallace Lake Road, that is a connection to a 16-inch water main?
That is correct.
Can someone connect directly to a 16-inch water main? I thought there were some limitations with how big that existing main could be.
Barbara, we do allow connections on 16-inch mains when there are no other available mains, but I'm going to let Barbara answer that question.
I mean, going back to the Split Oak deal, it's very difficult for us to have told some people no and then two years later say yes. And, you know, water lines going through other properties are a problem in different parts of the city, so.
I thought the agreement with those residents were...
That is correct, we don't go through somebody else's property.
They could fund that whole loop. They take that eight-inch line around the U there was the discussion, if I remember correctly. I was in water and sewer at that time.
The parish is going to help them build that line, and then they could all tap into it.
Yep.
Before you go to the Wallace Lake, let's resolve Councilman Jenkins' concerns.
That's what I need to verify, Councilman Jenkins. First of all, like you said, they're extending the eight-inch main because we cannot run a service through somebody else's property. And if they're getting assistance from the parish in order to extend that main, then that connection becomes a valid connection with the main.
Okay, yeah, and if that's the substance of the deal, great. Like I said, I just couldn't figure it out from the map.
The map didn't show that, you are correct.
Okay.
We'll note before tomorrow and get you an answer, Councilman.
Are you saying, Ms. Crawford, that this legislation is dependent upon what we get from the parish?
Yes. We'll need to make sure that the water main connection on 54 is to a line that essentially runs in front of, or directly behind the property. In this case, it's got to run in front of the property. There's an eight-inch line that goes down their street, but I was the director for water and sewer at the time when this agreement was made by the parish running that line partially down half of the street of the U. And the other part was, they were to finish the U if the other homes wanted to connect at that time, and none of them did, so they just stopped it. But now, they'll have to come through at some level and finish that out in order for this to be approved. But we'll verify that and we'll have that information for you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman Corbin's concerned?
Yes. We have out in southeast Shreveport a number of large water mains, including 16-inch and 12-inch. Normally, we do not allow connections to those, but since there aren't service lines, we have discussed the type of connection we will allow, and it's a larger connection that they have to reduce down because we're more comfortable with that tapping into those larger mains. It's a two-inch saddle, and they'll just reduce it down to their side.
Is there anybody else on Wallace Lake Road between Southern Loop and Walla Lucas that have tapped into that line?
I would have to check. I don't know, but I can find out.
I'd be curious, just because this is quite a distance from anything inside the city limits.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions regarding any of these items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We will add Resolution 59 to this list for the consent agenda if there are no objections.
If there are no objections.
Please move.
Okay.
59 is long. We added it. The mayor?
Yeah, tomorrow we act and if, add it, then we'll add it into the consent. All righty.
Please.
No other questions? Ms. Crawford, you may proceed.
Yes, sir. Resolutions on second reading and final passage on which will require only one reading. Resolution 42 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green for the Great American Cleanup. Resolution 43 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Department of the Air Force for the Barksdale Air Force Base. Resolution 44 authorizes use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. And Resolution 45 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Gregorio Chafin and Johnson LLC, Joshua K. Williams Attorney at Law LLC, and Curtis Joseph Jr.
Okay. Any questions or concerns regarding any of these legislations, kind of a step of reading adoption? Okay, may continue, sir.
Yes, sir. Introduction of Resolutions not to be adopted prior to April the 12th, 2016. Resolution 56 authorizes the submission of the 2016 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Bonnie's here to answer any questions you may have on that. That's an annual report that we submit that's required.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, may proceed, sir.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to April the 12th, 2016. Ordinance 31 amends ordinance number 84, 2015, the 2016 budget for the community development special revenue fund budget. This has been amended to reflect actual dollars that we have received in and the expenditures there too. Ordinance 32 enacts Article 7, Division 7 of Chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances relative to downtown parking permit zones. Ordinance 33 authorizes the mayor to execute a lease with the Caddo Parish District Attorney's Office for the lease of certain parking spaces. And then, ordinance 34, this is the one that's being replaced by 34A that we talked about at the beginning, amending section 9197 of the Shreveport Code of City Ordinances to increase the terms and penalties for speeding in a school zone.
All right. Oh, I was just going to say, I'm sorry.
I mean, you can wait and talk to the council.
Okay. So, on the, on the parking ones, I just want to mention, I know we've had a few things on parking in downtown, it can get a little confusing because there's been a number of things out there. Basically, what we're trying to do here is, you know, we're working with the DDA who manages our downtown parking to develop some ways we can get more revenue for the city and to really come into line with better practices here. So, in the past, you know, recently, we've done one allowing payment through, you know, online apps and things like that. And then, there was another one relative to handicap parking that's to come in line with sort of some better practices of what we see other communities doing. And these that are before us today, or that will be before us for final passage on the 12th, the first one is pertaining to permit parking. We've identified some areas throughout downtown where, you know, our traditional parking meters are set so that they are a two-hour maximum. Sometimes they are a one-hour or a 30-minute maximum depending, but the longest is a two-hour maximum. And there are some parts of our downtown where two hours does not provide enough time or value for that parking space for it to be filled or to produce much revenue. However, there are parking shortages in downtown that could potentially be addressed by permit parking. So, what we've done is identified those areas that are underutilized in terms of, you know, hourly metered rate parking and worked to identify spots that can be charged on a permit basis where somebody can have a permit to park there and they can park there for the entirety of the day. So, this is an attempt to get additional revenue. Those revenues that are identified in there are what, through parking studies, we think are workable rates for those, but until we actually, you know, begin this process, those are, you know, the best, the best guess we can do based on the facts that are available, what price range we think we can get for that. You know, we may have to come back and adjust that at some point down in the future, but we think that there is a demand at those, those rates that are listed in the ordinance. It describes different zones in downtown and, again, this is something to kind of make underutilized parking spaces more utilized. So, we hope that you'll support that. The other one, and that's ordinance 32. Ordinance 33 is, as a request to the district attorney's office, they have a need for some additional parking spaces that are close by to the actual DA's office. And so, we look to see how we can determine, you know, a lease price for those spaces. And we came up with a very scientific basis for determining the value of those particular spaces. We worked with them to determine if that was a doable agreement with them and they agreed. And so, that's what you'll find before you there is some reserved spaces that will go to the district attorney's office. There are some terms and conditions in there about when those spaces would return and the length of that lease as well. So, you know, basically, upon another district attorney being elected, those spaces would revert to the city and a new agreement would have to be reached with whoever is there at that point. So, sum that up, Will, or then miss any high points? Okay. Okay. So, just so I'm clear, and I'm sure it's clear in the fact sheet and I'm just missing it, the standard fee, now I'm on the first one here, right? Is that per day?
It's a monthly.
Let's see. So, that standard fee is for the month? That's a monthly fee, I believe. Let me pull up to make sure I'm looking at the same thing.
The standard monthly fee permit is what the ordinance says.
Okay, because some of those numbers are pretty doggone low. They are. Some of these spaces are fairly remote. Okay. So, yeah, you'll keep, think about it, you know, there's, like, when you come into downtown on Common Street, if you were to turn on Caddo or Fannan, there's several blocks there that... Turn right. Yeah, turn right. You know, there's really not any development over there, and so, those spaces largely go unused altogether, particularly when you can only park there for two hours. If you're going to park there and walk kind of a large distance to get to wherever you're going, you're not going to do it for two hours if it takes you 20 minutes to get where you're going. So, to have the all day, I mean, we're getting very little revenue on them now, so to increase it to something will give us a chance to see if that's, that's a market for that. And so, those currently, whether we're 700 Texas, which is obviously on the north side of, I mean, on the west side of church, right? I mean... On the other side. On the other, on the other side. On the far side of the church, yeah. Yes, or the west side of the church, right? So, we're going, so those currently have parking meters on those? I'm trying to pull up a map for, I apologize, I want to be looking at a map, but my computer's being slow on pulling it up. But, but yeah, there are, so another advantage to this is that these spaces won't necessarily have to be metered, you know, because they're going to be permit spaces. So, we can use those meters that are at the spaces to fill the deficit for, we're always having to replace meters at our other parking lots. So, those spaces that do have meters, those meters will be repurposed and then the places where we already need a meter and we're missing one. I got you. So, that's like the part that's going to be Shreveport Common and beyond kind of sections? It would be closer to that area. It's not actually in Shreveport Common, but I mean, it's in that, in that general area. It's on the way from there to Police Department. Correct, yes. Okay, and then? And actually, that block is, I suppose, in Shreveport Common proper, but yeah. We're talking the same... It's right there across from where the eventual park would be. Sure, okay. And so, the theory is that somebody goes to DDA or, and applies for a permit, and then they renew it every month or something like that. Correct, and then they get a zoned, you know, they get a permit that's zoned one of those colors. As long as that permit is displayed, they can park in that area, that zone that, so they get a permit for the zone, they don't own the space, you know, but they get a permit for that zone and they can park in that zone. So, for somebody that's a resident that actually lives pretty close? Would work great for them. Okay. Now, we're rolling back to the other question, the district attorney spots, they're on Mylum, right? But that's street parking per se, right? It's not a lot, or is it? It's street parking, yeah. No, they're on the street and they're on the side there. What spaces are next to them, do you happen to remember? Maybe a public defender's space or something?
Yeah, they're public defenders, no, there are, corner, you have the corner spaces, you have the certain sheriff department spaces, and then the block there by Panos, and there's a parking lot.
Formerly Panos.
Formerly Panos. There was a parking lot. The Johnson Building. The Johnson Building, there's a parking lot directly across the street. So, it's the first three spots on the corner of Mylum, I guess that's what.
Edwards.
Edwards.
Okay, got you. I mean, I'm sure there's, if I'm a reason, but going through just addresses when I'm pulling them up, I'm having a little struggle on figuring it out. Okay, good to go.
All righty, thank you for that discussion. Let me ask you a question regarding, and I think it's a great idea, but how, I'm more concerned about the ones that's coming Caddo and then those streets where very, very few are in frequent uses. Are those free spaces now? Is any of them?
Oh, no, they're metered. It's just the meters aren't being used very frequently. Sometimes when the meters are, you know, for instance, if there's a meter that goes out of service that's in a, that's in a high-traffic area, I wouldn't be surprised, now, I don't know that this is done, but I would not be surprised if sometimes a meter is taken from one of those spaces and used to replace a meter in a high-traffic area until the new order can be made because, you know, there really aren't a lot of people parking over there. But they are supposed to be paid spaces. But this would be great for, you know, for instance, think about like, like the southern nursing program that is eventually going to open in that area. I mean, there's a shortage of parking, a real one in that area, and it'd be a lot more cost-effective for somebody to have one of these permits and park in one of those zoned areas than it would for them to try to rent a space. I mean, the spaces in the lot across the street from us, for instance, are like, you know, $80 a month or $90 a month, you know? And so, this kind of a rate for what, now they're going to have to walk a block further or two blocks further, you know, depending on where they're, they're purchasing it. But it's a good value for somebody who is in the area a lot that doesn't, you know, need a permanent reserved space in a lot. So, we're hoping that that's enough to incentivize people to use the parking that's there. And because when you look at downtown, it's interesting, the parking studies show us, we have a, we have a lot of parking, it's just not always in the right places. And so, we've got to do those things we can to encourage people to walk that extra block or go that extra corner so that they can utilize some of the parking that's there and help alleviate the congestion in other parts of downtown.
We're anticipating new residential housing within next year, so has that, has that been factored into the equation?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, that, I mean, I'll say I work directly for that group. I'll say we purchased a lot for that development. We're going private on that, you know? But certainly, when that happens, you know, with that increase, and not just that project but a number of projects in that area, there is going to be an increased traffic in downtown. And as we have just seen, 509 Market has also been sold, Petroleum Towers, another one that, you know, we've talked about and there's developers interested in. So, as we see a return to residential living in downtown at a higher level than we've seen in the past, there is going to be a change in parking needs. You know, it will be a different time of day that parking is needed, there will be some changes in where that's... There will be some changes in where that scarcity is. But largely the drivers of, you know, the things that really throw our parking situation into real shortages is really the courthouse and the ebb and flow of activity at the courthouse. You know, when there's a lot of jurors and large trials going on and days where there's a lot of people that are there, downtown has a big shortage of parking. When there are days when there's light court activity, there's plenty of parking, you know? So that is the real unpredictable, you know, that's, I mean, we know on court days, we know within a few days when those parking gluts are going to be, but it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing to factor in. I mean, you know, it'd be an ideal situation if one day in the future there was some sort of a parking garage near the courthouse because there's a, it's a real generator of traffic and there's not really a lot of available parking in that area. So what we can do to incentivize, like I say, that extra block or two walk is really helpful.
Okay, good. And one more question, I'm sorry. In regards to policing, those have a way, have a way they're going to be, you know, fees are going to be paid through somebody and then what if somebody else is parking there or yet somebody's parking illegal?
So they'll be monitored by the team that monitors the parking now, the, I'm forgetting the name of Lorenzo's group, but Lorenzo, who is the director of Shreve Park. And so they'll continue to monitor and enforce, and it actually comes at a really good time to be done in conjunction with that new app that they are looking at using because they won't have to retrain a couple of times, they'll just retrain on, these are the changes to parking, these are how to ticket for them and how to monitor them. So it actually coordinating the two in the same timeframe is really helpful to them and they feel very confident and prepared that they're going to be able to make that transition.
Great, fantastic. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if 34A is added, we'll ask you to remove ordinance 34 tomorrow.
If A is added to the legislation, we will make the motion to remove 34, I mean, 34A 34, okay? Thank you, Ms. Clerk. All righty, thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. Clerk, is there any table legislation?
We're back. Ordinances on second reading, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm getting ahead of myself?
You're just ready to leave a little too soon today.
Please continue, sir.
Yes, sir. Ordinances on second reading and final passages. Ordinance 23 amends the 2016 budget for the general fund, this is related to the city marshal's salary. Ordinance 24 amends the 2016 routine risk budget for the intermodal bus facility its companion is ordinance 25 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 26 declares the city's intentions to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community development civil rights museum project. Ordinance 27 declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments heritage place project. Ordinance 29 amends the 2016 downtown parking enterprise fund budget and the companion to that is ordinance number 30 amending the 2016 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized.
Okay, thank you. We didn't want to miss those. Any discussion or comments regarding these ordinances?
Am I the only one talking today? I feel like everyone's-
Counselor, whatever, sir.
Keep going, Jeff.
I apologize. No, I don't mean to apologize, I appreciate everyone's attention on all these. Of course, I do want to just remind everybody, of course, we had the discussion about the intermodal bus facility. I think everybody's at least vaguely familiar with that situation there and why that's necessary. I do ask for your support on that. None of the administration's been very great in taking what has been a, it's a great opportunity for us and it's a grant that we've had for a long time. And when that thing opens, I know there will be a lot of people who breathe sighs of relief because there has been, through nobody's individual fault, there's been a number of challenges to that project. And so this will be helpful in moving it forward. Certainly, the community developments civil rights museum project is one that the previous council discussed. I think that there are several of us who've talked about it in this council too, but I want to make sure if anybody does have additional questions about that. I know community development, the administration and myself would be more than happy to answer it. I know Chairman Bradford is also very, very familiar with that project, so please feel free to reach out if you're not familiar with that. And then ordinance 29 and 30 are relative to the petroleum tower downtown. The petroleum tower is the one that, now, this is the, so last year we sold a reversionary interest that we had in this parking structure across the street from us. The city had a sort of a strange interest in it and the Downtown Shreveport Development Corporation, DSDC, made us an offer of, an amount of money to transfer, to purchase those reversionary rights from us as long as we put that money towards a parking project. So this is also allocating an additional sum of money from the parking enterprise fund for that project. This is not necessarily committing us to that project yet, but it is putting the amount of money in place and allocated towards that project when the administration feels ready to enter into that agreement. And so this is preparing us to be able to make that agreement and this is for there to be, you know, there will be a parking garage established in this area that's right across from the Regions Tower. You know, it's a very high-traffic part of our downtown that would greatly benefit from additional parking. And so this is something that would be a low-interest loan to the developer. It is money that would be paid back to the city and, you know, the city attorney's office and the administration has been working to make sure that those are on terms that are, you know, something that we can hold very accountable to and that we can make sure that the developer is participating responsibly in that, being that it's loaned to city funds. But they are, it is a loan, not a grant, and so will be repaid. This project also would, again, it would bring about $16 million worth, I believe, it's 16 million is the estimated value of the construction project that would happen there. So, you know, substantial inflow of capital investment into the heart of our downtown in a way that would be very positive for surrounding properties. And I think it's a very good trade-off for us where we accomplish a goal that the city has anyway and we also invite in significant economic development into our downtown. So it's a very, it's an unusual situation, but it's a one that's very positive for the city.
No, certainly supportive of, you know, the whole idea, concept, whatever. Obviously, the devil's in the details in the actual contract, right?
Right.
But the, just so we're clear on the intent, and I understand that this isn't the contract we're talking about and we're just moving pots of money. But the intent is ultimately for this to be collateralized by the parking facility that they're putting in place or the entire project?
I actually think it's by the entire project.
It is, it is, entire project.
I mean, but-
But as Councilman Efferson said, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because of funding that we received from the DSDC, we did indicate that we wanted to use that toward additional parking downtown. This will help facilitate that process because the petroleum tower will actually have a parking garage attached to it and so-
With public spaces over and above what they need.
I understand, and I'm just trying to-
Yeah.
I want to ensure that that link is as visible as possible of the money going to the parking facility. I'm not, just throwing it out there for future consideration. I'm definitely supportive of the plan, purpose. All I'm saying is, you know, I'd really like to tie revenue sources to the, you know, true objective, not that I'm not supportive of the whole project, so.
Yeah, no, I certainly, certainly understand what you're saying and we've had that discussion. I don't know, again, where that final contract will look like, you know, but it's certainly, the point's been made before and I appreciate you bringing it up, it's valuable.
And, you know, you just don't, if it doesn't work out, you want your investment left in the thing that-
Mm-hmm, mattered to you.
Mattered to-
Most.
I mean, whether it mattered to you or not, it all matters, but yes, that the purpose of where we generated the revenues initially is going to end up in the, you know, in that facility.
Absolutely.
Not that it's not going to go well, but-
Absolutely.
In the end, okay, that's just kind of conceptual idea going forward.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Where's the parking garage going to be built?
Adjacent to the building. So there would be, there's two buildings there now that would not be-
Small, two-story-
Two buildings in a lot.
Two buildings in a lot.
Empty lot.
It comes down, small building.
Uh-huh.
All righty, we're clear? Thank you. Any other discussion? And by the way, I would encourage your support for 23 and 27 also. I mean, I think this is a good slate of ordinance that we can all support. I really appreciate that we can go ahead and do that. Ms. Crawford?
Mr. Chairman, we don't know of any tabled legislation that is due to come off at tomorrow's meeting and so that brings us to property standards appeals.
Yes.
We have three properties today.
Good afternoon.
We have three properties. Our first property is 2749 Barrett Street. Okay. This is a property that came for the board recently.
It is, it is in worse condition than the last time it was here.
Lost a wall.
Terrence and I have spoken about this, I'll just, and we can get through it, but I'll, so this was one, the owner had previously asked to try to rehab it, but after this recent heavy rains, like it, you know, fell apart even faster than we, I mean, it was already in bad shape, but, but he's now agreed to demolish it, but he's asked for 60 days, so I know sometimes you can't get the word out. He's asked to demolish it and so, so he's asked for 60 days to do that and Terrence and I think that's a reasonable request, so we're going to ask to postpone for 60 days but require that the demolition take place.
Motion?
That's my motion.
Thanks, sir.
Move back, Councilman Efferson, seconded by Councilman Bowman, fixed the extension, postponement, rather. Is there any discussion? Now, please vote.
It's kind of modest, it's a thing we're going to do in charge here. You're right about that.
Motion passes six to zero. Unabsent.
All right. Our next case is 530 LaSalle Street. This is a career premise cleanup. Property owner has removed, the majority of the tree is gone. As you can see, it's cleared off of the street and whatnot. This is a one-man cleanup. He does have the weeds and the brush to finish and also, well, on this property, the weeds and the brush to finish. He has asked for 30 days?
Well, actually, went by, drove by there last week, actually, because I had binges over there and it looked like the rain hindered him somewhat. Do you agree that's what appears?
Yes, sir.
So considering that, I would like to move that we postpone this for another 30 days. Move back, Chair, seconded by Councilman Flory, that we give, postpone for 30 days. Is there discussion? If not, please vote.
That was for 530?
Yes, sir.
Well, they should be, they should be, they should be together, I hope. I want to be clear, I was asked for the postponement of both addresses.
Okay, so, but it's, it's a demo, one's a demo and one's a career premise?
Two cleanups.
If they vote that, that's a stat.
No, it's-
It sort of appears.
It's two cleanups.
I'm sorry?
It's two cleanups. But I think you have to vote, they have to vote on the first one.
They're two separate violations on two separate properties.
Okay, okay, let me ask, okay, I'm a little confused here. So this, these are the folks, I mean, this was, came up what, last, last month, right?
Right.
And it was a cleanup issue, right? And you had tons and tons of wood that were, it was kind of growing over the fence and everything else, okay? And he's cleaned up part of it or?
Yeah, well, you remember, it was, it was, it was, it was, yeah, I mean, he had that to clean up, but it, there was a lot of wood and stuff already on the curb.
And then he was expecting the city to come pick up, right?
They did, somebody got it. Who got it? City got it?
I'm assuming the city got it.
And, you know, listen, is it progress? Yes. But I think, you know, it's unfortunate that the progress is on the backs of the city. I mean, and, and I understood last time it was already on the curb, but are we expecting that his proposal, this time he's going to put the remainder back on the curb and we're going to go pick it up again?
Well, we, I'm sorry, counsel. Now, we talked about how do we, how do we address this and not changing horses in the middle of the stream? How do we, how do we legislate something that's new without giving sufficient notification and so forth? I mean, I'm, I mean, Councilman Corbman made it clear as a race to, you know, we are being, assisting in such a way that is creating, you know, somewhat of a deficit on our part, but how do we correct that?
Okay, but, and then this is a little bit of my perception of, correct me if I'm wrong, last time it was already on the curb.
Right.
That, that line of reasoning seemed fairly rational, right?
At the time.
It's already on the curb, right? What I don't want to be agreeing to at this moment is some suggesting that he can then, in this period, take all that, put it out on the curb and then we got to do it again. Because in that case, you're right, there was a mismanagement of expectations, but here we have an opportunity to say, yes, we expect you to clean it up and remove it.
Well, I mean, does this fit under the knucklebone criteria that they call in advance, I'm cutting this down and we can pick it up? I mean, how, again, this is-
Let us, our director is not here this afternoon because I'm not sure we picked up the other and that's what we're checking on.
Okay.
But why don't we ask for more clarity tomorrow and we can come back to this one because I'm not sure exactly what did occur? Are you, because you're not, I know your department didn't, well, your area didn't do it, so I'm not sure if, if Public Works did it. So we can, we can get some clarity on it for you.
I didn't talk to him.
And I'm just, all I'm saying is, I get what happened last time and I understand where we had already kind of, but this time I want to say, okay, we want you to pick it up and you have your 30 days, but you got to remove it.
Now, I'm in the motion if that's, if we think that's fair.
You don't think it's fair?
You don't think it's fair?
I mean-
I think if, the first one, we probably should have backed up on the first one, but this one falls more under, yeah, this one falls more under, to me.
No, but, but, I mean, the question is, is what, what is the parameter of us saying, you do it our, call it, call it, call in and we'll pick it up? I mean, what, at what degree of, of weight, of what degree?
Because this is not spring cleaning, this is somebody who has a property standards violation. And there's a difference. You know, if, it's a little difficult for me to tell the citizens of southeast Shreveport who aren't going to have their trash picked up today, which would be the fifth week in a row, that trash routes haven't been finished, it's difficult for me to explain to them why their trash is still in front of their house at 6 o'clock tonight because we're dealing with property standards violations. Oliver and Jeff and I remember from the last council, we had an instance where there was a gentleman on Jewella Avenue who tore down an entire house, neatly stacked it on the side of the road.
That also happened on Lywood.
Yeah, it wasn't Lywood, it wasn't Lywood, I'm sorry. Expected our crews to pick it up and I believe they did. So it's one thing to trim your Craig Myrtles and call for bulk pickup, but to have a property standards violation, you've let, you've let your property go past a certain point that it's in violation of city code and then expect that you do the minimum cutback and our guys are going to come get it. I can't go along with that. We have, we have too many other issues and I hope we will soon have that report from the director of Public Works on where we are with solid waste and any recommendations that, that he and the administration recommends that the council consider.
Thank you. I think, I think we can, we can understand that. But let me, let me do this, if y'all, I'm going to- If y'all, I'm going to withdraw my motion and, and move that we postpone this until tomorrow. One item. I want you, Mr. Green, to revisit the gentleman. Because I want to know that the city picked it up. It may be irrelevant, but I still want to know.
Okay.
And that you make him aware that since he was in violation of a property standard, that the council will be considering that he picked, he removed this, his own debris.
Okay.
We'll make the decision after we hear from the administration.
Both cases.
Go to one now. Probably going to take somewhere and dump it in the way it still picks it. Go dump it out of the street. No, we have, we have to modify this action.
That's illegal. So we're clear, that would be illegal and then he would be a criminal defense issue, not a civil issue.
I'm sorry?
Yes, criminal.
Are you, anybody have objections to that?
Last time, he had it on the street.
You clear?
Yes, sir.
Question. Is this for 526 and 530?
Yes. Yes, both, both of those adjacent, let's, let's read properties.
Who's second with your motion?
Councilman Florrie.
About the same owner.
Same owner, both.
Yeah. No, 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 no. To withdraw it?
Postponers.
To tomorrow? Yes. Okay.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Any discussion? Please vote. We'll handle this one extension of the property standards appeal. I gave you a chance to go back about here. Okay. That motion passes six to zero, one hundred and twenty.
And Mr. Chairman.
Corbin?
Making sure I know what I'm agreeing to.
That was on both of those properties, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We're just trying to make sure that we were together.
I was, I, I want, is y'all clear? It's clear that we, I was on my both locations on LaSalle Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have another one?
That's it.
That's it. Thank you. All righty, we're moving forward. We making progress. We'll go back in a few minutes.
Oh, no, I'm going to tell them just a moment, I'm writing down the address form.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'll just give it to a minute.
Okay.
I don't feel the need to announce to everybody what I'm working on on this particular issue.
Let me see what you.
No, 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 it isn't, it isn't that. I just need an update, so that's all. It's not a, nothing bad.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crawford, for your service.
Yes, sir.
I don't see any other appeals for tomorrow, Mr. Clerk.
We have none.
None, okay. All right. Our Councilman Jacobs is transacting his notes.
Keep going.
Any reports from board, officers, boards or committees? Councilman Efferson?
I will just report real quickly. The master plan committee did meet again and went well. We discussed a few things about, you know, about how to kind of proceed with a number of issues that are, you know, in the past couple of years and probably most of the time that this new council has been serving, I mean, probably one of the primary things that we've been talking about in terms of master plan implementation has been the unified development code. It is such a big piece of the implementation of the master plan. But there are a lot of other pieces and there are a lot of things that go on and are not necessarily just the city's responsibility. And one of the groups that sort of helps to facilitate the community conversation and advocating for a lot of those things to happen is called the Community Advisory Group. And so we had a discussion about sort of re-engaging that Community Advisory Group. They had largely sort of fallen inactive because they were very active for a while and then once the plan was passed, took a little while to get a lot of the stuff up and rolling. And so some of the members of that group changed and some of the representatives that have been assigned to it changed. So the special projects coordinator at MPC is going to be reaching out to the membership of that body to find out who's still interested in being active and what positions may need to be filled on that body so we can get it re-engaged. We also had some discussions regarding other, you know, questions about what was in the master plan. And we looked at a, the master plan actually has these time limits of when we should be working on certain aspects of it. And we are approaching the, you know, there's a timeframe that says things that we should be either working on or completed by 2015. Now, we're in 2016, but we'll give it a year of, you know, it's our first plan in 60-something years, so, you know, we all got to get fresh to it. But in there, the MPC staff compiled a list of those things that are to be done by about 2015 or so, where the two at least have been started. And what's interesting is a lot of those are city responsibilities and those things that are city responsibilities or even parish responsibilities, we have a good record for what's been done. But a number of things in there are things that are more community responsibilities or things that community partners need to have done. So the committee is going to take a look at those lists and kind of reach out and find out what else has been done, make sure that we fill in an accurate assessment of where we are on the implementation of that plan so that we can, you know, sort of prioritize what needs to happen next and help communicate those goals. So all in all, this productive meeting, we went over quite a bit and we'll be meeting again next month.
Okay. I want to stop that young man going at the door. Anyway, I tell you, and thank you for your leadership on that and being the chair this year, I think we will make some progress in that area. And I like, I like the citizens' participation. I like, I like that. Okay. Any other boards or committees who'd like to report? Madam Mayor, I requested last month some fair share numbers.
Yes, sir.
I will be calling the fair share task force meeting, I'm, I'm sorry, small, small emergency business task force meeting, on, tentatively on the 6th of April. And I would be, I would appreciate it if I have that as soon as I can so that I can prepare for that discussion.
We have it ready for you.
Oh, yeah?
We have it ready for you.
Thank you.
We'll just make sure that you get that by tomorrow, if you need it by tomorrow.
Well, give me time to review it, so, yeah, I'll, I'll be happy. I can pick it up because I intend to be at your press conference.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And I'll pick it up at the end for you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, and on tomorrow, it's part of my additional comments, so I'll just say it now that I have, I intend, I have invited Jeffrey Thomas of the Minority Supply Institute to come and do a presentation on some real staggering statistics that we had experienced in Shreveport and he'll share that with you tomorrow, okay? Any other boards or commissioners?
Postponers.
If not, Clerk, Mr. Clerk, you have anything you want to say now or tomorrow?
Because of the lateness of the hour, we don't.
So he yield, he yield to the next, next opportunity. I understand. Any additional comments from the council? Mr. Florrie, sir?
I'd like for you to be chair and take the little brochure. Ms. Turk is here in the chamber today with Southern Hills Homeowners Association. We're trying to renovate our Southern Hills Metro Park and I'm with Mario Chavez, Commissioner, and I will be hosting a Shane Seafood $25 donation there to help raise money for our park, so I hope that he'll please take note of that.
Wow, that's fantastic. We are also soliciting some, some corporate and citizens on our park. So we're, we're starting a new trend, I guess.
Yeah.
You need to get the mayor involved because she know how to get money out of people.
See, I think she's already gave us her contribution, the budget.
Anyway, any other comments from the council? Mayor, you have any additional comments?
No, sir, thank you.
I have no request to speak, so, nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.